Mr. Johnson, all the latest in our affairs and plans.
About that, we just thank you for all the great things you've done as a county, Lord, all the great things you've done as a people in the county. Be with us now, Lord, as we make decisions for the county, that we do it with the best shape and the people, Lord, as live in this county. We just thank you, Lord, all the policemen, Lord, and all the firemen, and all the service people that protect us and want to do what we just made, we pray for. Salute the Lord.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, Lord, we'll start out with an honorable hearing about the proposed intersection of Pine Towns for Warren Road and Pine Grove. Chad?
Mr. Chairman, some time back, the planning commission and then the board of commissioners approved the rezoning and a subdivision plan of attractive land off of Warren Road for Todd Queen or his development company for a proposed subdivision known as Pine Lake Subdivision. And Warren Road is a county road, but it's a substandard county road, and our ordinance is required that anyone who develops off of a substandard road has to bring the road or the portion of the road they use up to county specifications per the Public Works Department's recommendation. The developer and his engineer, Mike Price of M A P Engineers, have proposed an intersection upgrade and design and relocation of a portion of Warren Road where it ties into Pine Grove Road, and that drawing is in your packet. The designs by the developer's engineer has also been reviewed by Philip Schofield of C T I on behalf of the county. And Mr. Schofield made some recommendations, and those recommendations were incorporated into the design that you have in front of you. That's been presented to Public Works, and now it comes to you, the Board of Commissioners, because under our ordinances, any time that there's a change to an intersection to install a traffic control device, whether it be signage or roundabout in this case, or traffic signal, the board has to approve that. And there are a few residents that either live on or own property on Warren Road. A written notice was sent out to them on September the 11th notifying them of this proposed change and this proposed public hearing. And this is open for discussion now by the board, and questions can be asked by the public. The county, Mr. Bryson's here from the Public Works Department, Mr. Schofield's here, as well as the developer and his engineer, so we should be able to get any questions the board and the public may have answered. And this is an action item later in the agenda.
Do we have any others to ask questions about? One of you please come out and say your name.
My name's Lisa Guarini. We live at Warren Road, and we received packets this past week, but we didn't get them. I mean, they were dated the 11th, we didn't get them until October 15th. And in our packages, there were no visual aids, as in it said in the letter, as in referred to the pictures. And we got none of that second part of the package. So none of the neighbors I've talked to are aware of what the changes will be. So we're going blind. And that's one of the major questions, I think, overall that the neighborhood has. My personal concern is some of the wildlife. We have nesting hawks in that field that have been there for the past seven years that I've lived there. And I hope this doesn't disturb them, as long as with the turkeys and the deers and several things that are very valuable to our community as well that we have to share with that. And so I'm concerned about that as well as the road changes. And this is a first outreach by them to the neighborhood they meet to us. So I guess that kind of rounds out.
Chairman, did you have a problem with the drawings?
Yeah.
Could you give them a copy? You should just publish that. Is there anybody else here that has any questions about pork concerns? At this time, we're going to close the honorable hearing and move on to our regular meeting with three of us in this case in our regular meeting. Clark, could you call the room, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Long?
Here.
Thank you. This time, there are items to add or remove from the agenda. I know one thing would be added, Chad, is the CLIA award from the Dalton E D, or we could do that at our appearances. And also, I'd like to add some land under first, uh, decked position.
We want to add, under old business, the proposed approval of the architectory extension.
Yeah, so I'd like to.
That statement's in the last.
That statement. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the, me and Dennis in the agenda?
Make a motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Has everyone had a chance to look over the amendments from the last meeting? So, do I have a motion to approve amendments from the September 14th?
So would you.
Second. All in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we're going to call Captain Good from the Dalton Police Department. Thank you for coming out. I was kidding, I'm outside, I thought he was here to rest or hire or, you know, be fine and talk.
Actually, no, but we do have something in mind. I think we're going to do some recruiting up here next month. We got some.
It was time you were here, we're going to drive around up here and see if there are some of your officers. Just don't take your day, day or else that you wouldn't know what we're doing. Why you got day, day?
Yeah. Well, there, we do have standards, so we're. No, but I do, I do want to thank, I do want to thank the commission for having me. Sheriff Sis for inviting me up here. I do work at Dalton Police Department, which is just right down the road, but I'm also on the State Certification Committee, which oversees state certification and our relationship with CLIA, as well as the Chair of the S R I C, which is pretty much the group that develops the standards that the agencies are trying to meet. We do emphasize whenever we get an opportunity to go to, in front of commissions, you know, exactly how important this process is and how proud you can be of an agency that is in this process. You know, there are less than 25% of agencies in the state of Georgia that are certified or accredited, and then an agency like Catuessa County, who is accredited and certified, you're only looking at about 40 out of about 700. So it's a huge honor. You know, this is the body that sets, you know, most people hear the word certification and accreditation, you see that in schools, but, you know, our, our purpose for the committee is, is that no city or county shouldn't have a police department that does not allow itself to have external review, which they went through a very rigorous review, very, very good. Assessors came up, spent, spent time here. I've spent time there before. I'm very vested in the process here at Catuessa County, because I'm a resident of Catuessa County, so I'm proud that they entered the process about 10 years ago, I think, maybe a little bit longer than that. This is their fourth recertification. It's a huge honor. I know the sheriff is committed to the program and committed to professional standards, and that's really important. And I think we see that through interactions. I haven't had any interactions with the sheriff's office as far as getting pulled over yet, but hopefully that won't happen. But I also wanted to take a minute to talk about Deputy Winger, which is hard for me to say, because usually I just call him J.J. But, you know, I brought him in several years ago to serve on some committees for me. He's kind of our go-to guy when we talk about the difference between sheriff and a police department. So when we need expertise in that sheriff arena, we call upon J.J. When we look for agencies in northwest Georgia as point of contact, this is the agency we turn to. So there are very few agencies in North Georgia that have, you know, that have taken on this challenge. Catuessa County is one of them, and I think you should be very proud of what you have. I definitely see the dedication. I've seen their files as well, and I've seen their operations, and it's a top of the agencies. So I do have the certification award for the sheriff I would like to present from the Georgia Chiefs of Police and the State Certification Committee. Thank you.
We gotta get rid of the white, you and the sheriff, this bitch. It's not a leather shot, don't run away.
Okay, I'll work on that shot.
You guys are going to break the camera. You can have a say first. Elsie, come home, you got a guy to tell.
Ooh, that's true.
Okay, I got you. You want me out?
Permission to adjourn for just a minute, J.J., before you leave?
Yes.
J.J. is a big part of it, so he's our accreditation manager, so he's going to help to keep a lot of our files in order, but it is a group effort. We have a lot of great professional officers, and meeting these standards goes above and beyond a lot. A lot of analysis that we have to do requires a little bit extra from our officers, but now it's pretty much becoming second nature for them. You know, when they get trained from the very beginning of doing this, then it's not like it's anything extra. So we have a lot of professional law enforcement in Catuessa County, but I am proud to be the sheriff of this one and being accredited and certified. Thank you.
Two separate events this week with your officers, and one very special, good folks. We appreciate that. Congratulations. Now, for appearances, would you guys like to speak at this time? Moving on to administrative fiscal matters, yes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have the proposed approval of the service agreement with Motorola Solutions for one-year maintenance and service for the reported 911 recording system. The amount of the contract is $19,800, and this is saying it's intent for last two years.
Is there a review?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Totally.
Say it. If we have any questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for having me. Excuse me, I spent a busy week this week.
Y'all are busy.
Got a lot of ways to go. I'm here for a contract renewal number two with D B H D, the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, for the alcohol and substance abuse grant in the amount of $213,000. And I also have, along with that contract, we are required to hire our local evaluator for 10% of that contract amount. So hopefully we have both contracts in front of you. Dr. Arlene Wyatt is our local evaluator, and her fee is $21,300 annual.
Do you have a motion?
Totally.
Say it. Any questions?
Everybody on this is feeling well, I'm going to let you get the car.
Yes, just 100%.
One more thing, one more invite. If you haven't been to the team this week, we have a full day tomorrow and a half day Thursday morning, and please do come out to accommodate the tour.
Yes, I was just going to come in, y'all, and I was able to come yesterday, and that's a very good thing, Melvin.
Yes, thank you, Chair, for showing up.
All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I'll ask you out, I'll press that.
Yeah.
White hats, type of line, white hats here.
Chairman Henry and the commissioners, what we have tonight for you is that, as you know, we've been changing the drives systems out and getting ready for the upgrade in there. We're going to have a few extra computers. Right now, we have six that we've got available. I'll make a request to donate one of these old computers back to be scrubbed in, as far as the IT department, scrubbing and making sure there's nothing on it, pass that to the tax commissioner's office of Merriam County. Time to time, we, as tax commissioners, help one another out, and last year, Dalton Police, he's not here, is he? That's good. Danny's donated us 24-inch monitors, about 12 of them, last year, and helped us out, my girls and the guys that work over there. Merriam County donated us three state printers, the former went bad this year, just helping each one of them from time to time. We've also had them, Merriam County's kind of my document county, to help bring up a little bit of this, and they're small, I don't know if they're, and we have to find an accountant to help do some of the processing, and they don't have the computer for her, so she's sharing with someone else. They were in our office last week, and we responded to things, but they're going to found it out, so I'm asking for permission to give a computer to Merriam County, if possible.
Do you have a, over? And we're also been notified and go ahead.
Oh, yeah, there'll be some more, we'll get those changed out, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. No questions? Good, and knowing our computers go during the sales, like, thanks, but, would, do they need another one, would we?
Yeah, we don't get anything over by this, I know that they have one, and I didn't offer any more than that. But then we can give them, we can give them a couple of them, or.
They don't bring about $5.
Yeah.
They're all of them, I mean, a little hundred and fifty. All of their problem, they need more than one. Here again, we just have R T C scrubbing.
We appreciate that very much, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul, you got a finance report, too. That can't be enough with the wire item at all.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to report on the general funding technical summary for the 11th month of the current fiscal year, ended August 31st, with 91.7% through the current fiscal year. The operating revenues were $25 million, 97% of budget, therefore exceeded the budget 1.4 million, a 5.8%. Exceeded prior year 1.2 million, a 5.1%. Operating expenditures for the period were $22 million, 89% of budget, therefore exceeded the budget 666,000, a 2.9%. The expenditures exceeded prior year 688,000, a 3.2%. In summary, revenue exceeded expenditures 2.5 million dollars, favorable to budget 2.5 million, and favorable to prior year 591,000. And here again, this is through the 11th month of the current fiscal year. And that's allowed to split, that 2.5 is split pretty much between, equally between revenue exceeded budget and expenditures less than budget.
Going there, old business, our fire department. Yes, you want to do that, Skip?
Mr. Chairman, this addresses the request for approval of architectural services for the new building that's going to be fire station number two. It went out for request for proposals. The proposal from K C P is the most favorable proposal of the three proposals received, and it is the recommended proposal for the architectural services. The fee for that services would be $31,650, which is 100% of the services quoted, which includes design development, contract documents, bidding evaluation, and contract administration. We looked at the proposed contract, and it needs to be reviewed by the county attorney's office when it's submitted, a request that the proposal be approved subject to attorney review.
The board will approve. Yeah. And this, this is the attorney, the architect that needs to station three to be the same in some of our decks, Jack Killian, from there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jenny, you are up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Zoning case number 1276-18, rezoning of Tax Map 69A, parcel 88, from R1 to C1. The applicant, Paul Lee, has requested his property located at the corner of Highway 41 and Dogwood Lane be rezoned from R1 to C1. The planning commission first met in regards to the case on June 26th and tabled the request due to the fact that Mr. Lee didn't have a detailed site plan. Mr. Lee did present his case again to the planning commission at the August 28th meeting. At the meeting, Mr. Lee presented two separate site plans to the planning commission, and after hearing the case and reviewing the site plans, the planning commission chose to deny the case with a vote of five to zero. The case was denied due to the fact that the comprehensive plan shows this area as a rural neighborhood, and the C1 designation does not fit for the surrounding areas.
Is there anyone here for or against? Mr. Lee, you want to put this thing?
Yep.
I end up, down there today, were no signs, we put signs up there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we put signs up when the case is posted on the first hearing, and we take pictures to verify that they were there.
Good afternoon. Anyway, this property is located on Highway 41 on a corner of Dogwood Lane, which is a dead-end street. I mean, both times I came to the meeting, nobody from the community came and was against it. I mean, the main one I wanted was a mini storage, which is, has only 30 units. It would not be high traffic, 41 highways, long-term build anyways, everything being commercial. I felt like, I felt myself, it was a conflict. Mr. Hawthorne was the main one against it, any rezoning, yet he can get split zoning, anything, being a developer or developer yourself, and I'm not trying to put it on some side street or something, it's on Highway 41. It's a, I mean, you take your property, you pay your taxes, you decide you want to do something with it, and it's not, but some guys in the county can get, I mean, can get residential lands and just break.
I think normally the issue, I seen there was residential on both sides, then behind, it was.
Right, I put buffers on there to, the two streets, Dogwood Lane and Highway 41 is on the front side, and then the two behind, I got the room for the 50-foot buffer with trees and shrubs to, you know, cover it.
Do you think I have any questions for Mr. Lee?
Have you discussed it with the D O D already? This would have to be rolled up for a standard proof?
Well, I ain't never seen, you know, something that small brought, you know, with wire relays or anything like that. I mean, quarter mile down on Whitfield County is a commercial lot, and less than a mile on Catuessa County is a commercial lot, so, and, I mean, so two lane, Highway 41.
Yeah, I know the state does have standards, too.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, they, if they look, I think they, the amount of traffic might be going in or out. On a 30, 30-unit mini storage, it might be, some days, not even nobody in there. And the other one was, you know, I told them, because they was, this one would not even have, I mean, an office or anything, it'd just be storage units fenced and gated with shrubs, you know, paved driveway. And there's not, there's a need for many storage in the area, but there's none from Whitfield County to downtown Greendale.
Anyone have any questions? Then, what is our comprehensive plan?
The comp plan shows it as rural neighborhood, which allows for A1, PCFD, R A, and R1, no commercial.
Is there anybody else here that wants to speak? Do you have any questions for that? Do I have a motion? What are your motions? I'm going to approve of this one. I think we're the. I make a motion to. I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for motion to deny. Do you have a say? All clear. The motion is to deny, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is denied. Jane, you got one more?
I said, come on.
Or is that?
I said, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, mine. Jane, are you in?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and board, this is the item that was brought up in the public hearing, which is the proposed change in the design of the intersection of Warren Road and Pine Grove Road. I did not mention in the public hearing, but it is in the resolution that's a part of your packet, that if, in fact, this is approved, all of these improvements will be made by the developer at their expense, not the county's expense, and would be inspected by Jeremy and Buster and their department to ensure that everything installed meets county requirements and specifications. Also, whatever is put in would have to meet our standard waiting period and warranty requirements of two years before it would be eligible for acceptance as part of the public road system of the county. And because this, and this, the improvements will also all be made on the developer's property, any extra property that's needed will come from the developer, not the county, at their expense. The drawing shows a landscaped area to be maintained in the bill of that roundabout. That would not be a county long-term maintenance obligation, that would be a maintenance obligation of the HOA of this development. What we would do is enter into a maintenance agreement, require the developer to form an HOA and enter into a long-term maintenance agreement where the HOA maintains that at their expense, very similar to the detention. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, but also Jeremy and Buster are here, if there are any questions to the road department, the developer, his engineer, and the county's engineer are also here, if the commission has any questions.
Bill, do you mind? Did we look into the county perspective or?
Yeah, what we looked at the design, first major loss, there's some constraints. One was the road, bringing it up to current road standards. The other was, and of course, the big part of that is the way one road ties in the Pine Grove Road, it's at a very kind of severe angle, and so when you put that in to as close to perpendicular as possible, there's some different scenarios you have to look at. If you, we're going to try to do that without a roundabout and move it to the north, you've got property issues because it's on proper. So you've got that constraint, and you've got site distance issues if you're trying to shift to the south, which is also where you've got the deceleration lanes, about a hundred feet coming from the south as well. So those are, those are some of the constraints that we looked at. So when you look at the, I guess, the roundabout idea, with those constraints, we kind of agree with that recommendation, with, or a few little things, we asked for a dedicated left-hand turn lane on the Pine Grove Road where that connects in, and also in a roundabout design, there's usually a four or five-foot concrete strip kind of in the middle where buses, trucks, garbage trucks, things like that, that tend to, when they kind of come around the roundabout, they'll get up into the middle, and you don't want that to be vegetated, just, you know, run that up, and so they added that five-foot concrete strip in the middle of the roundabout there. And they had, they've got the hundred-foot deceleration lane for roadbound drivers on Pine Grove Road to turn in. So we start looking at school buses, garbage, we've got a community, if somebody pulls in, we don't have a roundabout, the only way they can turn around is to go down Warren Road on somebody's driveway and back out, or back out on the Pine Grove Road, which is also a safety issue.
And how old do you think this is safer?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, this is.
Warren Road is high. This, this makes that intersection much safer than what you get now.
Does this meet the G box standards or the, or is it close?
Yeah, I, I mean, not the geometry, I haven't seen a cross section or any of that stuff, the geometry needs.
School buses and everything.
Yes, sir.
Yes, then it might be a question to provide. This is the current.
Yes, sir.
So this one will go into the new development.
Yes, sir, there'll be a gate, once you pull in, they're proposing a gate.
Yes. Looks like it will square it a lot better.
Yes, sir.
The Pine Grove.
Yeah, would have the dedicated right, left-hand turn lane, you just got an easier, safer way to turn it on the Pine Grove Road in those directions.
This should stop people knocking down the guardrails and that curb.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't look at that, but potentially with the deceleration.
They would go there by five, and that curb would rain, and end up in the garbage.
Okay.
People then turn around, and you may not, they agree. Nice slope, and then, I prefer one here against, about to speak again, or did that draw, if y'all, what?
Well, the drawing helped as long, and also, something I'd like to add about the roundabout is the buses now have a hard time, they're dropping off right there in that curb and picking up in that curb, and people don't slow down, I have had.
I think this way is the best.
It would be much better this way, because you're going to have more kids in that neighborhood.
I think it's likely the buses to get off of Pine Grove.
And, yes, so that's a plus right there.
Well, if there's nobody else against, I think we could go to one of this. We just wanted to make sure y'all are okay with the drawing and everything, sorry you can get that.
What about the homeowners association, are we going to be?
No, sir, no. You can kick in if you all too tired or cringe at it.
I just wanted to make sure.
It is beyond the other side of that gate, we don't want that.
And I guess the rest of it is, so that's going to take care of all the damage that's been done with the big trucks coming in and out.
Yes, ma'am.
Without all the other, I mean, the road paths and it needs to be widened as well, because we're running into, there's six families on that road.
Well, hopefully this is going to take some of that traffic that just comes down your road, has to find a place to turn around off of your road.
Yeah, we could get a fresh coat of painting after they get done.
We could, we could call that in. We could talk to them, see.
It's horrible.
We'll, we'll look at it. Now, I would like to make a motion to approve, but I would like to extend the period that we, instead of a standard two years, my concern, y'all, is that you're going to have one section done, and I want to make sure we don't take the roundabout over until two years after it's complete, would be whole subdivision. That's my only concern, I don't want the taxpayers to, till we're a hundred percent done, make a motion to approve the meaning that we went two years after. Can we do that, Jane, on that?
Sure.
Just make sure and hold that through all of the instructions.
A hundred percent. But being a hundred percent, we get every lot completed?
What is normally, is it eighty or a hundred percent?
Normally eighty.
Eighty-five, I believe.
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five. Just, we'll do the eighty-five, this is the standard, but, you know, there's dog around that gets completely like the verb statements, and these would be rough in that. About a second?
Yes, sir.
If we showed it to the school again or anything, or they're about the, you know, they give us a pattern, you know, what they were recommending about the turn rates and stuff yesterday, make sure the circle, since that's, I know Phil didn't mention it, but they had asked us, you know, like. I think Buster and Jeremy kind of looked into the radius and school buses. Did we check, did we? Well, we would look at it, the school buses and garbage trucks and things like that in mind. Right now, the school buses are dropping off on the Pine Grove Road, which is dangerous. They have to make sure the radius is like at the end of. At the end of, where the ramp out is, the current ramp, make sure they're a little bit wide enough. Well, this one's going to be on two lanes, why, I did that correction, if you have dedicated, you know, school bus can easily make this turn. A lot of, they do a lot of grass.
Some kind of green, all the way over, with lamps.
Well, I would look after them too, though. And lamps, you got to get in there to keep it up. I'm playing. I'm playing, I'm playing.
Different concrete, all the way from the ground.
Yeah.
Which is called on the new road.
A lot of them is going with lamps, getting, going, going.
Mr. Chairman, it's twenty-five feet wide with two lanes, plus you've got the five-foot concrete in the middle, so the truck is retiring, and they kind of get up on that. It's not a mountain curve, so you've got thirty feet.
I feel it would be a much better approval than what we're doing now.
Clean, wide enough for buses and trucks.
And that drivers. All in favor, approve, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner, comments?
I'd like to commend our, the two CDs in the county, their chamber, they had their fire fighter of the year, and the police officer of the year, all of the, got awarded there, very good in the chamber, great job.
Sheriff, y'all have a say, I guess you can make a representative, thank you, probably y'all, our first, y'all did this, Sheriff.
Do it.
Appreciate it, getting that third, eighty, forty, out of seven hundred, that's pretty good. J.J., being the leader, still speaking.
Go, Peter.
At this time, we'll go into the technical session for legal personnel and land, clerk, all of them.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chairman here?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes. You are in the technical session. Motion to come out and say the session.
Totally.
Say it. All in favor, come out and say the session, say aye. We have nothing for all of the sessions, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor of adjournings, say aye. We are adjourned.